Call to order our Friday, April 19th, 2013 meeting with the Santa Barbara City Council. And to begin our meeting, I would actually like to ask Dr. Cash to lead us in the flag salute, please.
Please stand. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we do have a Spanish translation available for anyone who might need that. Tenemos traducción en español para cualquier persona que necesite, por favor comuníquese con alguien en la parte de atrás, aquí con la señora Luis que está atrás. And before I take public comment, I actually wanted to take a moment just so that we can all introduce ourselves. I will, I guess, start with Ms. Idelson, if that's okay with you.
Gail Idelson.
Ben D. White, Santa Barbara City Council.
Madam President, School Board Member.
Randy Rouse, City Council.
Helene Schneider, Mayor.
Monique Limon, Santa Barbara Board of Education.
Kathy Murillo, Santa Barbara City Council.
Kate Parker, School Board.
Grant House, City Council.
Ed Heron, School Board.
Frank Honskew, City Council.
Great, thank you. And we do have public comment today, and we will start off with our public comment. We have Mr. Lane Wheeler, who would like to say a few words to us.
Thank you, Lane Wheeler, President of the Santa Barbara Teachers Association. And it's a lot of pride and pleasure that I come before both the City Council and the School Board to thank and acknowledge two of our School Board members. The California Teachers Association and the Santa Barbara Teachers Association have awarded them the Gold Award for outstanding contributions to both education and to the students and professional staff that work there. They're going to be honored next Friday night in Ventura with the Gold Award, which is the highest award that we can give at the local level. And it is their great work that they have contributed over the last number of years to, like I say, the school system here and the policy decisions that they've made. And it's just exciting to be able to come forth and find a great bright light to say thank you and to acknowledge the great work that they've done. I'm often asked why someone would want to run for the Board, and I always have to pause and consider, as the City Council, I'm sure reflects in a similar way occasionally, that you are very involved in people's lives and you make many, many, many policy decisions that have a greater impact than many of the other, both federal and state institutions that they are out there. So, again, I'd like to thank both Ed and Kate for the great work that they've done, and we look forward to them being on the Board for a number of years to come. And I wish I could reach out to the City Council and make similar awards. We have honored one of your former City Council members, Marty Blum, two years ago. So, it's not that it can't happen, but I did want to celebrate today. And I noticed that Chief Sanchez is in the back, and I want to thank the Board, the City Council, and him for the work to have a police officer, a resource officer, at Santa Barbara High School. And we really do appreciate that, and it's made, I believe, a very big difference. So, we have a great partnership with the county, and we look forward to continuing that partnership with the city of Santa Barbara. So, if you're interested in attending next Friday night in Ventura, and we'll be celebrating both Ed and Kate, and along with Kathy Corey from the Children's Creative Art Project, and then three of our members who have also been exceptional workers in the field. Thank you very much, and we appreciate you, and thank you for your night.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. And I know we introduced ourselves, but I didn't know if the Board clerks wanted to do an official roll call or if the introduction would suffice. So, I'm looking at...
It suffices.
All right, thank you. And we do have one more public comment, Kate Smith. Do you know how to work it? Dr. Cash, perhaps we could get assistance with the timer?
Mr. DeSantis is going to keep the timer.
Thank you, thank you.
Members of the Santa Barbara School District and members of the Santa Barbara City Council, there is deep-seated and widespread school and government corruption. Taxpayer-paid lawyers, appointed administrators, and elected politicians, that would include the City Council and the Board of Education, collude and conspire to cover up wrongdoing. The retaliation against whistleblowers, advocates, and activists is rampant and severe. We, the people, are outraged and suffering. We have lost our democracy. There is no due process, otherwise known as justice. I am submitting to you information about a documentary done by Robert Greenwald called "The War on Whistleblowers." It is the ability of the government, and that includes the school district, it's the ability of those people who are paid by taxpayer monies, their ability to suppress the truth and to retaliate against the whistleblowers, who are merely doing their duty to uphold the Constitution and to speak truth to power. It's called "The War on Whistleblowers," and I hope we will be showing it in Santa Barbara soon. Second, I was arrested almost two years ago. It was an arrest at a School Board meeting, closed session, at the offices of Griffith and Thornburg. It was possible to have...
Thirty seconds.
Oh, well. I will speak, I will continue when we speak about the Gang Task Force. We, the people, are trying to bring in compassionate community, practical wisdom, and restorative justice. Otherwise, we, as a people, are doomed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. And that concludes our public comment. This annual meeting, it sounds like it's the 13th annual meeting for our School Board and our City Council, is an opportunity for us to collect and publicly discuss some of our shared interests. But I know that the work really happens year-round, and that not only are we communicating year-round, and not only are our respective staff members and leaders communicating, but it's work that really is ongoing and that takes a lot of work, especially on some of the issues. But it's a great opportunity to be together, and I welcome the City Council for joining us. Madam Mayor, I don't know if you have a few words for us?
I'll be brief, just to say how much I do appreciate these joint meetings. As you mentioned, Madam President, the work happens year-round between us as electeds, but also amongst the staff. But really, to have a public hearing like this where we can look at some joint issues of mutual interest, city and schools work very well together. We have different authority levels and jurisdictions, and yet they overlap at the same time. It can get confusing to the general public. So, sometimes being able to have this in a public setting can help shed light on those issues. And so, I appreciate these each and every year, and I look forward to hearing the reports today.
Thank you. And with that, we will actually start with our reports. And the first report is on the Crossing Guard Program. And that is Ms. Chatey.
Hi, thank you. I'm sure that you've all read this report, but I want to reiterate how happy we are to be in this Crossing Guard Program with the city and the Police Department. It's been for three years now, and we pay 50% of it, and we really appreciate all the hard work that the city has put into helping us fulfill the Crossing Guard positions when people leave. And they're very, you know, very spontaneous to us. They really help us get people in there once they have left. So, we are at the end of our three years, but we are also, will bring back to the Board an MOU for the next three years. And again, I really appreciate all the city's hard work in keeping our kids safe at these particularly dangerous intersections. Thank you. Any questions?
Board or Council, any questions? Ms. Parker?
No questions, but just a thank you. I mean, obviously, we'll have questions when it comes back to us to sign off on, but this, I know, is hugely important to the parents of Santa Barbara, and that they really appreciate, really, on everything that we do, but this is one that affects young children on a daily basis, and they really appreciate that the city of Santa Barbara is involved in that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chatey. Next, we have a report on the Safe Routes to School, and I believe that's by Browning Allen.
Actually, I can cover that as far as item nine.
All right. We will note that. And following, we have a report on the Youth Gang Task Force, and I believe that's Saul Serrano, but it's...
I think, Madam President, I think on six, seven, and eight, the idea was those would be written reports, and there weren't going to be presentations made.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. So, we will move on to number nine, report on the East Side Neighborhood Traffic and Pedestrian Improvement. We do have comment on a written item. I'm sorry, we're going to...
Okay, I'll go through them.
Ms. Smith? You're welcome to come to the podium to comment on item number eight, which is the Report on the Youth Gang Task Force.
And there will be no discussion of the Youth Gang Task Force?
No, those are written reports.
And where are they?
They are on the table.
No, but where's the written report? Is it just what's in the agenda?
Yeah, it is, yes. It is what's written as attachment behind the agenda or after the agenda.
Oh, this is the agenda. Oh, okay, well, that's fine, I'll come up and speak.
This is regarding the Youth Task Force. Please Google "school-to-prison pipeline." There are more than 2 million entries, but the first one is by ACLU. It's called "Talking Points." The school-to-prison pipeline is the reality, that we incarcerate rather than educate the low socioeconomic sector of our children. And that's why we have a privatized prison industry, making a huge profit out of hundreds of thousands of blacks and Hispanics pushed into prison, starting from the cradle. It's a Holocaust for our country, and it was created by none other than our superintendent, Bill Cerrone, and his cronies, in conjunction with our DA, Tom Sneddon, the one famous for spending $5 million of taxpayer-paid money to persecute Michael Jackson. So, I would like to bring up the fact that the Gang Task Force started with a grant, $800,000, over two years, and on September 12th, 2008, there was a similar joint meeting at the Gepard. And I gave you the California Public Records Act copy of the fact that Don Olson, the administrator who wrote the grant, he was the first one to receive $40,000. Having been a grant writer, I can tell you that. That's illegal. You can't have the grant writer, who was paid to have a position with taxpayer-paid money, you can't have him writing the grant, having the government receiving the grant, and then administrators lining their pockets with the grant. I went to the Board of Supervisors and the joint meeting with other agencies...
Thirty seconds.
Oh, well, I went, and that's when Don was trying to explain what the Gang Task Force was, and Janet Wolfe, a supervisor, said, "But I don't understand the program." Because there was no program. All of the money was dispersed in $40,000 increments to those people who were retiring. So, if you look at Brian Sarvis and Michael Gonzalez's last year's salaries, it was spiked.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
And that's where Ed Heron asked me, "Why would..."
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
"Why would Sarvis be getting..."
Thank you, Ms. Smith, thank you.
"...be the supervisor of the Gang Task Force?"
Ms. Smith, thank you. We will now move on to item number nine, which is the Report on the East Side Neighborhood Traffic and Pedestrian Safety Improvement Efforts.
Madam President, if I could, just as Mr. Allen gets up, want to highlight one thing in the written report on item eight, which is about the probation data, showing some good data here from 2009 to 2012, a 33% decrease of juveniles in probation with gang terms and conditions, and a 28% increase rate of juveniles with gang terms completing probation from 2009 to 2012. I think that shows some good results.
Absolutely, it's notable, and thank you for all the efforts. All right, Mr. Allen.
Okay, thank you. I'm Browning Allen, Transportation Manager with the city of Santa Barbara in the Public Works Department. And I brought with me today Jessica Grant. She's one of our project planners in my division, and she was the project manager for this effort that I'm going to describe to the Board. So, thank you, members of the Board and City Council. I'll be brief, but I'm going to spend a little bit of time talking about the Safe Route to School program, as well as I go through this presentation. So, we, in our department, we did an East Side Neighborhood Transportation Management Plan. The goal was to listen to residents, to respond to their concerns about their neighborhood livability, primarily addressing pedestrian and traffic safety concerns that they have expressed to the city. We've engaged the residents, you know, the goal was to engage the residents regarding any pedestrian or traffic safety concerns. We evaluated existing conditions in terms of traffic-related concerns. We established and prioritized pedestrian and traffic safety concerns from the residents. They were the ones who helped us prioritize those issues. One of the things we wanted to make sure we did is we informed and educated the surrounding neighborhoods, the efforts that we're doing, so it didn't come as a surprise that the city of Santa Barbara was actually in a neighborhood doing a work effort. And then, through all of this, we're developing short-term and long-term solutions to the concerns that were expressed by the residents. So, this here is a map of the areas that we identified that we're working with the residents. So, this is Milpus Street, and we have Selena Street over here. This is Cannon Perdito, and then the 101, or Puntagordo down on the south end. We identified the two schools that were actually in the neighborhood. We also have Cleveland Elementary School, where we allow the residents to feed to, from the east side, feed up to Cleveland School. But we also recognize that we have the Santa Barbara Junior High School and the high school, where the residents also attend those schools. So, we work closely with the site administrators of all these schools in addressing the concerns in these neighborhoods. So, this is a timeframe, I'm not going to spend a lot of time, but we started over here, where we got City Council to direction to do the Neighborhood Transportation Management Plan. We are now at the internal review process, and I will tell you how we got to this process, but we're now in the process of wrapping up our work efforts. So, what we did, we had an east side listening workshop that was where we sat down with the residents, and we heard what they had to say. We had city staff members facilitate a conversation with the residents. We sat around tables. It was a situation where we just wanted to hear from the residents. It wasn't staff standing in the front of the room, talking to the residents. We, basically, we listened to what they had to say. We listened to what their concerns were. The topics that we identified were speeding and traffic laws, lighting, or lack of street lighting, or the need for additional street lighting, missing access ramps or sidewalks, bicycling, is it difficult to bicycle around town, or residents obeying the bicycle laws, and their issues, or any issues they might have had dealing with transit, whether getting to the bus stop, are there bus stops that are covered, or the issues once they get to the bus stops, how are the bus stops. Following, in addition to that workshop, we handed out a survey through the schools, as well as online, and Jessica has a stack of the surveys that we'll hand out to you that you can take with you, so you have an idea of what we did. We handed out a survey, we were trying to get input from the residents. We did the distributed surveys in two methods. One, which was very helpful, was through the schools, the elementary schools. So, the principals had the surveys handed out with the Thursday packet, and they had the parents working with their students, fill out the surveys, and they returned them back to the school, and we went and picked them up. The surveys were done in both English and Spanish, and we gave them crayons to circle the areas where they had some concerns, as well as filling out the surveys. We also did surveys where they could go online and fill out surveys. So, we're in the process now of finalizing the results of the surveys and some of the other work efforts. So, what we heard from the surveys and that first meeting, you know, there were 10 issues, areas that the residents identified that they wanted the city to address. Poor stop sign compliance, you know, they felt, you know, none of the residents expressed that when they're at a stop sign or getting ready to cross the street, cars weren't yielding. Not a big surprise about not yielding for pedestrians, but the stop sign compliance was a little bit of a surprise. We have asked the Police Department to step up enforcement of stop signs in the neighborhood. Concern about cars speeding on various streets, lack of neighborhood lighting, needing additional lightings, missing sidewalk links, obstruction of sidewalks. A lot of the residents in this neighborhood have homes where they have bushes that are, have grown over onto the sidewalks, so we're sending correction notices to them. Access ramps, bicycles not abiding by the rules of the road. You know, many times, we see this all over our town, where we see people riding on the sidewalk, or riding opposite the direction of traffic, and are not wearing helmets. And then, additional bike lanes was one thing that they identified, and then some, needs to address some concerns at the bus stops. So, where are we? So, we did the approach workshop. We did that in April, early April. And this was a time where, this is a workshop where city staff, it was Jessica, we presented what we heard, and we offered some suggestions, solutions that could be done to address their concerns. So, we reviewed what we heard through the survey, as well as the first workshop. We did a recap of what the engineer, traffic engineer did, when he did his traffic analysis of all the collision data. Then we identified some possible approaches that we could take to address their concerns. So, what we're doing now, we're finalizing the next steps. So, we're finalizing the Neighborhood Transportation Management Plan to present it to our Neighborhood Advisory Council, our Transportation Circulation Committee, and then to the City Council. So, we've, so the residents at that workshop, they had, those that were attendance identified their priorities in terms of things that they wanted the city to address. So, we're in the process of putting the final tabulation of the questionnaire that they filled out at that workshop, so we can take it through to our final review process. So, in addition to the work that we are doing on the east side, we have two grants that we have, the city has received, to address some concerns. The first one is we have the Safe Route to School grant for Cleveland Elementary School. This is one that we work closely with the previous principal at Cleveland Elementary School, as well as the PTA, to address concerns that they have for students being able to cross Selena Street and safely get to the school. This is a federal grant. We got matching funds from the Measure A Safe Route to School program. It's fully funded, it's currently under design. The, one of the main things that we're doing is at Selena's and Casique Street. You'll see here where the intersection is offset, and it's pretty difficult for some of the students to cross. So, our traffic engineer took a look at this, said, "Let's realign the intersection just to make it a little more noticeable for the students to cross the street." So, this is currently under design right now. We hope to have this under construction summer of 2014. In addition to that intersection approval, we're going to be putting some access ramps in, as well as putting what we call the Rapid Retainer to the Flasher. And if you've been on Milpus Street or on Cabrera Boulevard, those are devices that we recently installed. And this is a picture of Milpus at Ortega Street. The Rapid Flashers are located here and here, and there's one on the other side of the street. And at this location, we had put a pedestrian refuge island in, as well as the beacons. Not only in Milpus Street, we just put the Rapid Retainer Flashers in. So, we're proposing putting some in on Casique Street, as well as on Clifton Street, on Selena Street as well. Again, to give additional assistance for our students to cross the street to get to The Measure A Safe Route to School, that's the half-cent sales tax measure that was passed by the voters in 2008. There's a, in the South County, there's a program where we can apply through a competitive process for grant funding, and one of the programs is the Safe Route to School. So, we applied for funding last year, and we're successful in it. So, we're putting in some pedestrian refuge island in these locations over on the east side, and these locations were identified as being problematic for students to cross by the coast, who handles their Safe Route to School program, and working closely with the school site administrator. And we also are going to be doing some improvements over by La Cuma Junior High School, using those same funds. And these are, let me back up. So, these are the locations here. We recently completed a Safe Route to School project where we reconfigured the intersection at Modoc and Porto, excuse me, at, yeah, Modoc and Porto Swallow. And this is finalizing the program that we identified that needed to be addressed there. So, next steps. So, we're going to be going to our Neighborhood Advisory Council with the financial plan in May, on May 15th. We'll bring the full Neighborhood Transportation Management Plan to the Transportation Circulation Committee on May 23rd. And then, sometime the end of June or early July will be before the City Council with the final Transportation Management Plan, with a draft financial plan, as how much it's going to cost, and potential ways to fund this. One other effort that Jessica is leading, she's doing an east side bicycle ride for the youth in the east side, that's on May 18th? 18th. So, we'll be working closely with the staff of the Franklin Center, as well as the school, to get the word out. It's an opportunity for Jessica, working with the Bicycle Coalition and Coast, to have an educational component for bicycling, offering some helmet fitting and some free helmets for those in attendance, and then give them some bicycle skills, teach them how to ride a bicycle. Classroom setting, in the parking lot, and those that the licensed bicycle instructors feel confident with will take them out on the road. So, look forward to that as well. So, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Mr. Hodge?
Yeah, Mr. Allen, thank you. I noticed we have curb cuts in some places with crosswalks, and curb cuts in other places with no crosswalk, which looks a little bit like sort of an invitation to a disaster to me. What's the, how do you determine when you're going to have a crosswalk with a curb cut or not?
Well, that's done by our traffic engineer, and just kind of set the stage. A crosswalk doesn't necessarily make it safer for pedestrians across the street. You know, I've been walking around this town since I've been here, and I've seen many crosswalks for people to step off the curb because they have a pain in crosswalk, and think a car's going to stop. You still have to make eye contact with the driver, make sure the driver's going to stop. But there is a criteria that our traffic engineer uses to evaluate whether intersection qualifies for a crosswalk. They look at the volume of vehicles on the street, the width of the street, what's going around. We will be putting crosswalks in as part of the Safe Route to School project on Selena Street, because we're going to have better visibility at the intersection of Casique and Selena Street.
And do we have a survey now, so we know, subsequent to these improvements, whether we've really helped or not?
Well, we definitely are going to be doing a before and after, to make sure we know whether or not we, the things that we're doing are improving it. So, we believe we do have before data, but we definitely will be updating it before we go into construction. And we'll usually wait a year or two years after the project has been completed before we do after survey, because we want to make sure everything is in, we get people used to it, then you go back out and do another survey. If we do a survey like a couple of months after, it's so new, yeah, people are going to be stopping or slowing down. So, we want to let the traffic settle down before we do an after survey.
Understood. Do we know what percent of students at Cleveland walk or... Do we know what percent of students at Cleveland walk or bike to school?
I do not know that. My understanding is a pretty high number of students do walk or bike to that school. And they walk, at the entrance to the school, by walking through the backside, not off of Euclid's Hill.
I understand. Dr. Cash, do we have those, that kind of data, or do we not keep that? I don't know. Because some schools, everybody drives, other places not so much so.
Cleveland is anywhere from two-thirds to three-quarters walkers, not a lot of bike riders, and the rest are dropped off by cars.
Thank you very much.
And we have Councilmember House and...
Thank you, Brownie. I'm remembering back, when I was reading the staff report, it talked about this being an international program. And I remember when it came to Santa Barbara, and the three doctors, Dr. Drew Von Henkel, Dr. Casten, and Dr. Flores, were together in a room and talking about the possibilities. And I think the first step they took was to go out and, with Dr. Casten's and Dr. Flores, who was just taking over, their support, to go out and talk to the principals. Have the principals identify difficult spots around each one of the schools, and with the superintendent's support, that was the beginning, I think, of it here in Santa Barbara. And what I was just requesting, not so much just for this particular program, but could we get a summary somewhere along the way of the long list of accomplishments and programs and dollars that have been brought in through the grant process? I mean, the East Side has, Upper East Side has had, you know, two $450,000 grants, we've had, you know, the bicycle rodeos, the bicycle school buses, the walking school buses, the crossing, and then all this volunteerism. Is there a way to get some kind of a summary somewhere to celebrate the success of this remarkable program?
I'll look into it. I know we can get the board and the council a summary of the grants that we've been successfully receiving, when we've been very successful in receiving Safe Route to School grants, both federal and the state. I'll work with Coast. Coast is, we contract with Coast, Coalition for Sustainable Transportation, they run our Safe Route to School program, and I believe they're in every single elementary school in the city limits.
That's right. They had fathers participating as well, which I really like. One of the fathers came and spoke to us the other evening at City Council, and the moms and the dads get involved. They take it really seriously.
Right.
I mean, every morning, you know, they're pedaling their bicycle school bus in, you know. Anyway, thank you very much.
Sure. Your work.
Thank you. We have Councilmember Murillo, and then Mr. Herron.
Thank you, Madam President, Madam Mayor, and Mr. Allen, thank you for your presentation. I'd like to ask the school staff, if they can, if we put that map back, that first big one that you had, can someone tell me where the line is of blocks of, you know, the city blocks, where the students walk to Cleveland, and then where they go to Franklin? It seems, yeah, that's the map that I'm thinking of, but it was like one of your first... Is that easy to say, how you draw the line, which, yeah, which areas go to Franklin and which areas go to Cleveland? Anyone?
Are you talking about attendance boundaries?
Right, attendance boundaries.
I couldn't draw them on that map, but I can certainly provide the council with a clear copy of our attendance boundaries.
Okay. And I was hoping, since we have, thank you, upcoming public meetings on pedestrian safety, if there's a way that the school district can notify parents about these meetings? The TCC meeting is in the evening, the Neighborhood Advisory Council meets in the evening. I'm not sure when our City Council meeting, sometimes we meet in the evening, sometimes at 2:00 in the afternoon. Do you have newsletters that go to your parents, or is this a touchy subject?
No, no, we'd be happy to cooperate and participate in that. We want safe routes for students to get to and from our schools. So if you give me, send to my office the information, I'll make sure it gets to our principals, who will distribute it to parents.
I think Mr. Allen then would be the person from staff?
Yeah, it would be Jessica.
Jessica.
My last slide I didn't show, but, you know, the principals were, of all the schools, were very helpful in getting the word out for both the workshop, as well as distributing the survey. So, especially the principal at Franklin Elementary School, she allowed us to use the multipurpose room, and have the school site custodian there to help open the room, and be there to answer any questions or take care of needs. So we definitely have a good partnership with the school district. We look forward to finalizing this plan and getting it implemented at some point in time.
And finally, related to safe routes to school, is it true that Coast is still trying to get a grant application going with Franklin School, Franklin Elementary?
Well...
And I guess I would encourage the school district to encourage Franklin School to work with Coast. I just, I know it's not easy sometimes to bring different stakeholders together, but we're doing one at Cleveland, and it seems worthwhile for Franklin or Adelante, their campuses are adjacent.
So, just to respond to your question, Councilmember, the Measure A Safe Route to School program through SBE-CAG, we applied for grant funding for the current year that becoming the City Council in another month or so, with the agreement, is addressing concerns for pedestrian safety of the students around Franklin Elementary School.
Okay.
So we identified some locations where we could make some pedestrian improvements, and we're looking at doing pedestrian refuge islands here at these six locations leading up to Franklin School. So Derek Bailey, our traffic engineer, walked the area, worked with Coast, and identified locations where we felt it was appropriate to do something, and we were successful in receiving funding for this.
I'm very excited about that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Herron?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Allen. I'm just curious, you mentioned in those 10 items that the parents came up with in the discussion, that some were traffic, some were bicycle yields, stop signs. Has there been an increase in citations at those locations?
With the police department, they went out and did a, stepped up enforcement the first week in April. Did we get results on that yet?
We're telling you.
Yeah. So basically, what I wanted to do is have the police department try and do enforcement for one solid month, and I really wanted them to do it during school, during, when school's in session. So we didn't do it during spring break, when the students weren't around. So we want to do a full month of enforcement for a couple of reasons. One, the drivers who are not yielding to our students, you know, if they get tickets, the word's going to get spread out versus one week, or kind of hit and miss. So one solid month of enforcement. So hopefully by the middle of May, we'll have an idea, and I'll be happy to share that with the board, as well as the City Council, once we have that data. But I know they have issued some citations, we just don't have the tally yet.
Any other questions or comments, board or council? And Ms. Wheeler, this is for this item?
Yes.
All right. We do have public comment, so I will take public comment. Mr. Lane Wheeler?
I'll be exceptionally brief on this. I just wanted to remind both City Council and the school board that there is a large children's center located on Yonah, not only the Franklin Children's Center. It looks, from what I saw, that that is being incorporated in the general footprint of Franklin School. But that, having worked there back in the 80s, we have a lot of foot traffic, and a lot of parents bringing very young kids walking into that center. And I would just encourage you to make sure that that's considered in that, in that aspect of the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wheeler. All right. And I'd just like to thank the staff, because I know you have been working, the city staff, you've been working very closely with our principals, because I've spoken with some of the principals, I've also spoken with members of Coast as well, and I know that this has really been years in the making. And every time we hear of an incident that happens, and unfortunately, they happen all too frequently, because one is too many, it reminds us of the importance of why we have to keep working together. So thank you. And now we will move on to item number 10, which is a report on the Redevelopment Agency. And I believe we have Ms. Chate and Paul Casey.
Good afternoon, Madam President. My name's Paul Casey, I'm the Assistant City Administrator with the City of Santa Barbara. I'll start off the presentation, kind of giving you a status report about the dissolution of the Redevelopment Agency, and then Ms. Chate will follow up with kind of how it's benefited or not, or to the extent that it's benefited the school district financially in that regard. I spoke to you all about a year ago, when we were kind of in the throes of the chaos of the dissolution process with the Supreme Court ruling in December. And so, at that point, we were just getting started. I think we had just appointed the Oversight Board, which was kind of the legal entity that has representatives from the different taxing agencies here, who were, was then kind of the governing board of the dissolution process, that then forwarded recommendations up to the state of California. So since that time, over the last year, the Oversight Board has been meeting regularly and making decisions. Part of the technical process they go through is they look at recognized obligations that they could approve for funding. Essentially, the activities of the Redevelopment Agency was completely frozen, and then there was a decision-making process about which contracts that were already entered into would be legally observed and funded through property tax to complete those contracts or not. And so we had a really complicated series of meetings, going through dozens of projects to kind of determine what would be appropriate to fund based upon the legislation or not. The Oversight Board made their determinations, you send that up to the State Department of Finance, and then they essentially look at it all over again, and they have veto power, you know? Unanimous vote of the Oversight Board, doesn't matter if the State Department of Finance didn't think that was an appropriate action, and then they'd send it back, and we'd have to reevaluate that. So that process went on, but as you would understand and expect, you know, the first few months are very complicated and detailed, but then you kind of winnow the issues down, so it becomes a little more streamlined as we move forward. Of course, the state being the state, and not really expecting that the Supreme Court was going to throw out Redevelopment Agency, says, you know what, we better rewrite the law while we're in the middle of this. You know, chaos is happening in 400 cities across the state of California. So last summer, they did kind of a major comprehensive legislative update to the dissolution of redevelopment agencies, and essentially kind of reset the process. And that's fine, that's what they do, but we all had to learn a new, a new law now, and how to implement that. So that was fun, to kind of start that up again with the Oversight Board as well. Basically, though, what that laid out was a series of ways to kind of dissolve the cash payments and the cash that the redevelopment agency had on hand. And so we did a series of audits, looking at our affordable housing money, and kind of cleaning that up and deciding what was left over. Did a detailed audit, looking at the capital side, determining what was left over. And then we wrote checks to the county, who then redistributed that money to the taxing agencies, based upon the distribution that property tax gets distributed now. So we sent about $18 million back to the county to be redistributed as part of that process. So a little over $2 million of cash on hand, a little over $2 million of affordable housing money, and then about $13 million of unspent capital money. So we sent that back, plus we weren't getting the annual tax increment, so that's been redistributed to the taxing agencies as well. What we're hoping is that very shortly, in the next couple of weeks, we will achieve what's called a safe harbor status, or a notice of completion, that we're trying, a finding of completion, from the State Department of Finance. And what that does, that's kind of a golden ticket, for lack of a better word, saying that you played by the rules, you did what you're supposed to do, we're giving you a little gold star. And the benefit, the carrot they're kind of holding out, is saying if you had unspent bond proceeds, bonds that you had issued legally and appropriately as part of the Redevelopment Agency, that we've kind of have a frozen hold on, you can finish spending that bond money for projects that were identified to be spent on for those bond proceeds. And so that's kind of the carrot this new legislation kind of held out there. So we've got about $12 to $14 million of unspent bond proceeds, that we're hoping to be able to finish some needed capital projects with, if we get this finding of completion, which we're expecting to get again in a couple of weeks. So that'll be kind of the next iterative process that we go through. And then the final process that we have to deal with is how we deal with the real property that the agency owned, and how we get rid of that. And it's called, we have to come up a long-range property management plan. And of course, I think you probably read, and the council certainly knows about, parking lots were a big issue for us. Over the last summer, when the state was rewriting the law, the State Department of Finance threw in one sentence that said, by the way, parking lots are not governmental assets. And that seems kind of innocuous, but by definition, if you looked at the rest of the law, it meant that you were going to have to sell off that asset to the highest bidder. So we cried foul, and got the language taken out with Assemblymember Williams' help out of the legislation, and so we were happy. So we moved quickly with the Oversight Board, and said, let's transfer the parking lots as governmental assets. And the Oversight Board said, sure, no problem. And we sent that up to the State Department of Finance, and they sent a little letter back and said, nope, parking lots are not governmental assets. And we said, wait, you tried that in legislation, and we won, and now you're just saying it again. So we appealed, went up and met with them right before Christmas, and fortunately, they came around and said, okay, we give, they're governmental assets, you can transfer the parking lots. And so we've taken that. So the parking lots are off the table, they're done, we're very happy about that. The remaining lots that we have, remaining properties that we have to deal with are the railroad depot area, there are parcels down there, there where the historic railroad depot is, as well as the site of the children's museum, right across the railroad tracks. And so we'll be working with the Oversight Board in the next couple of weeks to, our recommendation is that they are governmental assets as well, and we think the state agrees with us, and so we're not expecting too much difficulty there. There's the old waterfront industrial land off Caicedo Chavez, the school board, who've been around a while, know that we've kind of talked about that property. That we're going to propose to be sold off, and the proceeds then get distributed to the taxing entities. Doesn't have any project proposed, it was kind of an opportunity purchase about 10 years ago. So the law clearly says, if you don't have any proposed use, that you should sell that property, so that we can get the cash and redistribute it to the taxing entities. And then Paseo Nuevo, extremely complicated. We have a 75-year ground lease under a portion of Paseo Nuevo, that has kind of obligations, but really no revenue, it's a dollar a year lease, and so that lease stays in effect. And so how do you sell that off? And is anyone even interested in buying that kind of long-term, dollar-a-year land lease that has obligations that the city has been providing? So that'll be a complicated one to figure out, but I don't think there's a lot of money there. I think the largest cash one will be this Caicedo Chavez property. So we'll go through that. That'll be over the next probably month or so, working with the Oversight Board and the State Department of Finance. And then after that, then I think things really kind of settle down, and there isn't a whole lot left to do, except for that bond issue on the bond proceeds, and continue with the dissolution process. So that's my summary recap. I'm happy to answer any questions, before we turn it over to Meg to talk about the school district side of things.
Any questions? All right, Ms. Chate? Thank you, Mr. Casey.
I sit on that RDA committee, and it's been a, it's been a wild ride. So how does that affect the school district? Basically, the dissolution of the RDA affects it in basically two ways. And I won't, I know a year ago, we sat there, and I explained to you how school districts are funded, and I, believe me, I'm not going to go through that again with you, and I'm sure you appreciate that. But basically, every district has an entitlement, and that the state says, this is how much money that you're going to get. And it's offset by property taxes. And the difference between the entitlement and the property taxes are what the state is obligated to pay the district. With that being said, with the dissolution of the RDA, the property taxes have increased. Therefore, the state aid that we are expected to get from the state is not, has been reduced, because more property taxes supplement the entitlement. So with that being said, there's a big advantage to the state, because they don't have to pay us, they have no obligation to pay the, their obligation has decreased. The second issue we have is that it helps us with our cash flow. The more property taxes that we receive, the less the state can defer, and that's a good thing. So we appreciate all the money that the RDA committee has given us to offset the entitlement, and we appreciate that. The dissolution and the, when they release the assets and reduce the obligations, that is more money that comes to the district through property taxes as one time, and the following year, we will not get that. So it's great for cash flow purposes, even though we only get our property taxes twice a year, it still helps us in the long run with the deferrals from the state. So, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chate. Ms. Parker?
Can you tell me what the amount was that came from the dissolution to the district in terms of increased property taxes?
In the year and a half. I know this year was about 6.3, and then we had a one-time fund, and then we had about 3.5 last year, because last year was only half a year.
Madam Mayor?
Thank you. So, just so I can try to translate it in my head, what you're saying is, the dollar amount, your budget is staying, let me back up. Where the money's coming from is coming from a different source, meaning the property tax increment is coming from, that's grown, which makes your budget more stable, because that's not due to dealing with state budget issues. So that's a line item that is just now bigger, but the overall pie of the money that you're getting is the same.
That's right. Our budget has not changed, it's just where the cash is coming from.
So there's no net increase in funding?
There's no net increase.
It's just a more... It's just a more secure, a larger, more secure slice of that pie?
Right, except for the one time.
Member House?
I think that answered my question, that's what I really get it, because it was really sold on this is more money for our schools, which I remember the lottery and some other things. And so, what I'm understanding is there is no more money for the schools except for the one-time piece, which is, you gratefully accept it, right? And so, your only real benefit from this entire shakeup is that stability that the mayor's talking about, really?
And the local, our local property taxes is being, is more, is...
Is a more stable source than elsewhere in the state?
Absolutely. It's more, it's more, yeah, we can account on that money, we can count on it. Whereas, we don't get, the state defers money from July to February, crosses years, it's a mess.
So, effectively, what has happened is around $20 million of locally generated taxes on an annual basis has been taken out of our community. We get, Paul, our RDA was about $20 million a year, right? And it's now, in a way, moved away. I mean, it didn't go, it didn't, your budget here at the school district didn't go up by $20 million.
No.
No. And the city of Santa Barbara doesn't get the $20 million. We get a little piece of it, probably some small portion of that comes here. And I just want to really, for me, it's important because we have really had, that was a really tough time you guys had trying to work this stuff out, and I really appreciate it. To keep it even civil was remarkable because of how hard these, yeah, look at that. We've got to appreciate this.
Where's the photo for Newsweek there?
What's, in Santa Barbara at least, you know, because this is generated here locally in Santa Barbara. So, what, how much of that redevelopment agency, the taxes and stuff, do we get to actually recirculate in our community now?
You know, Grant, I would, I think $20 million is too high of a number to say because the city gets 13% of that tax revenue back as property tax in the general fund. The county gets, I believe, ballpark 30% of property tax back, so that's staying locally, it's just going to the county.
Some portion stays in the city.
Exactly. You have the flood control district and you have some other small ones. I think what Ms. Chatey is talking about is the school district's kind of ongoing revenue, which I think combined between the two districts might be around 40% of property tax.
Yeah, 48%.
48%. So, that, I think, 48% of the $20 million increment, the state is just kind of netting out.
So, about a half of it has gone away?
Right.
Okay, thank you. But it's important to note, $10 million, some, or $9 or $10 million, something like that, that we used to generate here locally is now going to the state. It's not staying and recirculating in our community.
And again, it's not, not going to the state, but the way the school finance works, the state's not sending it.
Well, it's going out of Santa Barbara.
Well, the school district's keeping it, the state's just not sending as much money as they were two years ago.
Yeah, our budget has not changed, it's just where the money is coming from. So, it's, if you had a dollar in entitlement and your property taxes was 50 cents, the state would owe you 50 cents. Now, with the RDA, the state, the entitlement is a dollar, the state has paid you, or the property taxes are 75 cents, now the state owes you 25 cents.
I see.
So, it's just, it's just the difference between what you're entitled to.
They took it away, they did take away what they were giving you, and then, we've replaced it with our local taxes.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, I just think this is important. I mean, we, and we made good use of it here. Anyway, I'm glad you're getting part of it, thanks.
Mr. Herron?
I'm just curious, is another benefit potentially that it gets us closer to being out of basic aid?
Keeps us out of basic aid.
Closer into?
I mean, into basic aid, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I understood what you meant. My projections, if we stay in revenue limit, because we may go to a new funding source, is that these one-time funds could throw us into basic aid, but that's for one time. We don't get that the next year, so we're back right out into revenue limit. And I know I've probably lost the councilman on this, but...
Any other questions or comments, Board, Council?
The Caicedo Chavez facility, I know, has been talked about for many years between the city and the school district for a number of reasons and ideas. That's a public, open process, right? It's not like the government agencies have first dibs, it's really unless, but if the school district, because I know that was an option if the school district wanted to buy that piece of property, frankly, you're going to get some of that money back with whatever you sell, I mean, if you want to figure out that one-time money, it's sort of like buying it at a discount or, so, what's the timeline for that? I mean, you have to go through the Oversight Committee first, and then, we have to do a public session about opening bids and, is it a, how does the process, is it just an open bid process? How does that work?
Madam Mayor, you get to dispose of the property, it's kind of funny, you get to use the redevelopment law for transferring the property as you dissolve the redevelopment agency. And the only distinction I say about that is that the City Council knows we've disposed of some property that had a very convoluted process that we had to go through of offering it to different entities and that kind of stuff. The redevelopment law is a little more streamlined of a process where you do essentially kind of put it out at the market and take your highest bidder. There is a portion of the legislation that says that if one of the taxing entities wants to purchase the property, they can do so, they can be kind of first in line to do so. You would appraise it so that the other taxing entities are kind of made whole, and then, then you purchase it at that appraisal price, which the benefit is, for instance, from the school district, is you have to pay off the other 52% of the taxing entities, but you don't have to pay your 48% of the cost of purchasing the property.
So, half-price sale to the school board if they want it.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Chatey, thank you, Mr. Casey. Dr. Cash will welcome you to give us a report on the Santa Barbara Unified School District's strategic plan.
First, I'm going to say, this is a lot more fun down here than it is up there, so, I didn't understand that until just today. All of, the Board is very familiar with our strategic plan, and Council, you have a copy too. We remain fiscally conservative, so you've got a black and white version of our color plan, but if you'd like to see it in color, please, you can go to our webpage. Really briefly, I want to talk about it.
We do have a colored copy.
Oh, my goodness, wow. Wow. Boy, I must, yeah, that was a budget buster for us, so I hope you appreciate it. I want to first publicly again acknowledge Jim Armstrong for his work in developing the plan. He was a great voice throughout our meetings and really want to appreciate that. And another city employee who wasn't at the time a city employee, who was on the task force as a parent and a community member, Mark Alvarado, also was a really strong contributor to the strategic plan. It was a really eclectic group. We had people from the city of Santa Barbara, Santa Barbara City College, UCSB, we had teachers, parents, community groups, we had Lane Wheeler, who was here, the president of SBTA, we had also the president of our Classified Employees Association as well. And we met over a span of about 12 months, we had 11 meetings, I held six community forums, and we got over 200 responses to our webpage request for input. So, we got a lot, a lot of input. I remember one week in June last year, almost a year ago, where I decided I was going to get all the input done, and I worked from about 6 till midnight thinking I was back in college pulling all-nighters, but we did get a lot of great input. Our plan, we looked at, we asked ourselves three questions. What are our school district's goals? How do we expect to reach those goals? And how will we measure success in our district's delivery of education? And from the answer of those three questions, we came up with what we think are four aims, big ideas, and that is that we would want life, career, and college-ready students, that student, family, and community engagement was extraordinarily important, that we wanted to transform our organization, and we knew we needed to concentrate on facilities, that's a big issue for us. And within each of those aims, we addressed many, many other smaller issues. And I'm just going to talk about a couple because I think the plan itself is very self-explanatory. The most important was, was high expectations for all students. We want to increase the academic achievement for every student. We don't want to have one student's academic achievement improved at the expense of others. It's what I call simultaneous act of raising the ceiling while raising the floor, very, very important. And it's under our number-one aim, which is life, career, and college-ready students. The theory of action behind that is that not every student wants to, needs to, nor do we as a community want them to go and graduate from Harvard. We need students, multiple pathways to success. We need students to be recognized for their talents and their strengths, and we need to provide them with opportunities to demonstrate that to not only us, but to our community here in Santa Barbara. Within that, we also thought it would be really important to emphasize some specific things. One is visual and performing arts, the other was science, technology, engineering, and math education, which are part of the strategic plan. And within that, we hope to create what we're calling a wall-to-wall technology learning environment for our students with the idea that every student, some point soon in their future, is going to be taking with them some sort of mobile device on which most all of the content that they'll be learning will be contained. I think it's really important and embedded in the plan in this area is the understanding that content is everywhere, it's not just solely in the repository of the teacher, and that students have access to it 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and we need to recognize that as an educational institution and capitalize on that and ensure that our kids have that opportunity. So, also very important within there is improving outcomes for our students with special needs. That's an extraordinarily important thing because we have a large number of students with special needs within our, within our school district. We are looking to expand our continuum of services for students, meaning we want to make sure that every student gets the program that they need in order to be successful, reach their goals and their family's goals when they leave 12th grade. And that will require ongoing teacher training for us. The most important thing that we can get our teachers to learn how to do is to differentiate instruction, know how to teach differently to different students and not just give every student the same kind of instruction, because not everyone learns the same way, not everyone learns at the same time, and not everyone learns at the same pace. And so, it's important for us to recognize that and to give our teachers the tools to deliver that kind of instruction. In order to do that, we've got to have continuous learning opportunities for our staff, and we are about two weeks away from presenting to the Board a very comprehensive three-year professional learning plan that will engage not just our teachers, but our instructional assistants, our classified staff, and our administrators in ongoing training to ensure that we meet the needs of the students that we have in our district. Ultimately, we have to eliminate the achievement gap that we have. We've had a lot of stuff going on in our district. We still have an achievement gap primarily between students of color who are economically disadvantaged and white students who are economically advantaged. That gap has to end. I'm sick and tired, the Board's heard me say this many times, I'm just sick and tired of talking about it, so I don't really want to talk about it, we're just going to do it. And we have a lot of things, if you, when you read the plan, if you haven't already, that you'll look in. The last thing in this area I wanted to mention is that we really want to meet the holistic needs of our students. Not everybody learns the same way. We have lots of kids that really need project-based learning, they need to engage in some sort of activity in order to stimulate their brain, to order to really see it, to learn it. That's going to be very important. We want to expand our course offerings to include more culturally relevant courses for our students, for the actual students in our schools, which we know is very important. And we really want to support alternative education opportunities for kids. The Board knows this about me, and I'll share it with you, I think alternative education is the future of education. I think the idea that everybody's in kind of a cookie-cutter program simply just isn't what the 21st century is going to hold for our children, primarily because of what I said earlier, and that is content's everywhere. So, our goal is to really look at every kid individually and do our best job to individualize instruction to the greatest extent possible. And the best, best conveyors of that are people who are involved in alternative education because that's what they've had to do for years. I also think what's contained within this, we'll spend a good deal of time looking at how we can expand and evaluate our character education, our anti-bullying programs, and really improve our counseling for students and families in our communities. Our second aim goes directly to that, and that's student and family and community engagement. The strategic plan is based on a theory of action that says very simply, families are the most important partners we have in educating children, and that parents are the first and foremost educators of our children, and that we, as an institution, need to recognize that, celebrate that, advance that, and learn how to integrate that into what we do each and every day with children. You know, a lot of that means we've got to look at different ways in which we operate just our facilities. How do we ensure that we get parents engaged at our schools? I would venture to say that what we currently are doing is clearly not effective because we have large segments of parents in our community that are not engaged with our school community. So, our elementary principals have been tasked with the idea of coming up with at least six new innovative parent engagement strategies. I'm looking forward to hear what they'll come up with, and that will be presented to our school board probably sometime this summer. We want our schools to be community centers. That's really, really important to us. And so, it's difficult at this particular point in time because as a superintendent, I'm faced with what I think is a primary and urgent need, and that is to ensure that students are safe at school while at the same time trying to make our schools, to the neighborhoods, be friendly, inviting, in places they want to be. And so, that's something that we have to work on. We don't want barbed wire, we don't want fences everywhere around our schools, we want our neighbors to see our schools as part of their, a part of their neighborhood and not apart from their neighborhood. I think that's very important, and that's part of Aim Two. Aim Three is transforming our organization. The number-one thing here is that no student is anonymous, that we will put students first in everything that we do. That may seem like, well, geez, I mean, shouldn't, aren't you guys doing that? But the reality is oftentimes, as work moves along, adult issues get in the way of what's best for kids. And we really are going to ask that question. Is this really the best needs of the adults in our system, or is this about putting kids first? And I am a strong believer in that no student should be anonymous in who they are and what they need in order to be successful. And so, our schools will be, have been tasked with the project of coming up with ways to determine that every student, no matter who they are, at every school, no matter what size they are, has some advocate on that school who knows who they are, and that they just don't go through the day as an anonymous person in our school system. Very important. We're also going to align our budget process, and I know the city's budgeting process is complicated and over, I'm sure you would say probably overly bureaucratic. I can guarantee it, ours is at least as bad or worse. It is beyond belief, and trying to translate that to the community is extraordinarily difficult, and oftentimes, it appears to really smart, well-intentioned members of the public that we are obfuscating the truth, trying to hide stuff, making it up, when we're just simply trying to say what the state has told us to say in relationship to the budget. I have to say, we've got a really great start, and I want to publicly acknowledge the work of Meg and Con, Meg Chatey and Condra Tedeschi on their great work on the interim, second interim report that they presented in really good, plain language that was easily, I sent it to my mom, who's 88-years-old in Walnut Creek, and then quizzed her on the phone. And she was able, based upon that document, to clearly articulate what the intent was. So, which was really, I thought, a great testament to some good first steps on being as transparent as possible. The last aim is facilities, and really, our theory of action here is we're looking to be guided by what we believe is the appropriate model, and that's a sustainability model, where we'll create and maintain well-equipped and modern learning spaces. We currently are just about, we are finished, and we'll be presenting at our facilities workshop, a complete assessment of all of our district facilities, the first one that we have done in many, many years, maybe the first one ever done of all of our facilities. It's a, has been a comprehensive process, and Dave, because Dave's still here, Dave has been our district staff that has facilitated that process. I've warned each of the school board members that if they would like, we have two, four or five-inch three-ring binders filled with detailed specifications in relationship to our 90-year-old boilers, our 60-year-old ballast, our 100-year-old windows. But if they would just like the summary, I have a nice one-inch binder that provides all of that in a little less detail. But once we've done that, the obvious plan is to come up with a comprehensive master facilities plan that will help guide decision-making in relationship to the 2010 bond measures Q and R, and then, we'll see what happens from there. So... So the strategic planning process was, I think, a very good one for our community. We hadn't had a strategic plan in our district since 1998. And so the Board of Education approved it in December of 2012. The first components of that strategic plan that have been completed are going to be presented to the board and discussed on Tuesday night. And those will be revamping of our civic center use permit and the first look at a strategic plan for our human resources department. So we're excited about it and look forward to continuing the conversation with our community. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Board or council, any questions or comments?
So I'm still up here.
You're still up here for Common Core.
I'll go quicker. So the state of California in August 2010 adopted the Common Core State Standards. And I really thought, I think I only have eight slides, so it's really quick, a good introduction for our community, for you leaders in our city to understand how there is going to be a very dramatic change and what we expect kids to know and be able to do in our classrooms, grades K through 12. As I said, it was adopted by the State Board of Education in August 2010. Our district spent the first year after that doing a lot of information gathering. To date, 45 states have adopted the Common Core State Standards. These are not national standards, that's really important to understand. Some people keep calling them national standards, but they weren't developed by the Department of Education, they were not developed by the federal government. They're a product of, really, state governors, about 10 state governors and about 10 state superintendents of public instruction got together, were not happy with their own state standards, and began work with content experts in math and English to develop these. So there was a lot of information gathering across our state and within our district that first year. This last year, 2011, 12, we did a lot of training of the staff, we, with principals, sent them to listen to the people who actually wrote the content standards, to learn about them, and began training our teacher leaders. This past year, we've trained all of our staff. Everybody has had an opportunity to, at various levels of engagement, to learn about and understand the Common Core. Currently, I just want to just kind of give you so that you can understand why it's such a dramatic change. We currently have the California Content Standards, they're in math, science, social studies, English. It's content and skill acquisition. It's multiple standards that are repeated throughout a student's K-12 experience. So the idea originally was this kind of what they call a spiraling effect, little bit, little bit, little bit, little bit, throughout a student's experience. Educators have been calling these assessment tools very flat and two-dimensional, passive response, Scantron, number-two pencil. You have what's called a forced response question, bubble in A, B, C, or D, and if you don't know, we'd always tell the kids, it might be C, that's your best answer. Not a real high-quality form of assessment yet. That assessment tool was the primary document used to determine and rank schools throughout the state for the last decade, resulting in what's called the Academic Performance Index, which is that three-digit number that realtors love and supposedly tells families what neighborhoods they need to live in. We are moving to a very different system, and I'll explain that to you in just a second. One of the huge shifts right now, the Common Core, it's completely in moving parts in English, languages, arts, and math, though science was just adopted as well. And sciences, it'll take days to explain the differences in science, so I'm going to go with the easy ones. The shifts in English is that English language arts applies across the board to all content areas now, that teachers in math, science, and social studies are expected to teach English language arts strategies. The best way to understand why that's important is just this simple sentence, it takes a different skill set to read Harry Potter than it does a biology textbook. Very different. We've recognized that. And so we're going to ensure that our content area teachers do that. A big shift is moving toward nonfiction and informational texts in addition to literature. Literature is not going away, contrary to some myths that are out there. We're still going to read great works of literature, that'll still be a requirement. But we're going to teach kids how to acquire, access information through informational texts and nonfiction. And writing is going to be grounded in evidence. So instead of kids writing the typical sort of narrative, I'm explaining or retelling what I've learned, I'm going to take an opinion or take a stand, I'm going to provide evidence why I did, and I'm going to provide some sort of supporting argument as to why I've made this sort of decision. And there'll be regular practice, academic vocabulary will be very important. In mathematics, very, very different in math. Going to move to, instead of having multiple standards all the time, there'll be two to four critical areas that will be focused on deeply at each grade level. And instead of having content standards of maybe 100 per grade level, there'll be more, there'll be around 50 per grade level. Gives students a lot more time in order to learn. More coherence and also high rigor. Just to give you an understanding right now, the kind of common expectation is Algebra I. Every student under the Common Core will have to repeat, have to complete Algebra II by the 11th grade is the current course scope and sequence for math. They'll be assessed in a very different one, it's going to go beyond the multiple choice. Students are going to be demonstrating critical thinking and problem-solving. It's a computer adaptive test, meaning how I answer one question will determine what the next question is for me, as opposed to every student having exactly the same questions. Really important for our really gifted students and also our students that struggle because typically the students that struggle, then they get this, they can't tell us what they know. If alls they have is 40 questions or 20 questions, and those aren't the questions that they know about that topic, we'll never know what they do know from that assessment. This assessment will allow us to go deeper into understanding what they know and what they don't know. Same with the gifted kid on the other spectrum. Gifted kids would do these tests, they could complete these tests in like 20 minutes. They'd be doomed, 100% correct, done. Which would be great, wow, you know a lot, you know they know those 20 questions. Well, gifted kids will be, will have to actually go farther and deeper. And they'll be summative and formative. And I want to show you what one of those tests, one of those test questions look like so you can get an idea as to what we're talking about. Five swimmers compete in the 50-meter race. The finish time for each swimmer is shown in the video. Here's the prompt. Explain how the results of the race would change if the race used a clock that rounded to the nearest tenth. This is a fourth-grade question. No. You're excused. But a very different way of assessing a student's understanding of place value. Very different way. And the explanation that's required is conceptually different than what we currently are doing with kids. What we would have had in this assessment before would have been a prompt with four answers, and a kid would pick an answer. No explanation required, good guessers rewarded, poor guessers not rewarded. So very different, very different. And one I don't have on here, which is the last example I'll give you, is students right now are asked, are being asked right now, of the four, of the four events in history noted below, what is the primary cause of World War I? And there'll be four things they have to pick. The smarter balance will say, of the four items noted below, which would you pick as the cause of World War I? And in your answer, explain why you did not pick the other three. Very, very different. So, any questions?
Councilmember House?
It's going to be a lot of fun grading those things. I mean, it's really interesting, the teachers are going to be really having to do a different level of critical thinking about each student's answer, and it'd be very interesting to see. I guess that's what your training's been about.
Yes.
To a large degree. It's a qualitative, relational kind of thing as opposed to a mechanistic kind of right-wrong.
Absolutely correct.
Ms. Edelson?
Yeah, I think one thing you didn't mention but stands out in my mind is the fact that the students are not timed.
Oh, that's a really important point. Thank you for raising it. Right now, kids are timed, you got 40 minutes, 60 minutes, 52 minutes to complete the test. These will be untimed, kids will have as much time as they need to answer the questions, which, thank you, which is very important for kids. I mean, I'm...
Okay, Councilmember House and then Councilmember Rouse.
Okay, real quick, I noticed that in your strategic plan, you know, I was just counting, you have a number of images in there, and at least half of them are either performing arts, visual arts, or kids involved in manipulables or doing something like that, even one sort of an ROP-type thing, I guess, sort of in the, you know, working with a vehicle. Where does that fit into this core standards? I mean, it seems like that's essential, we always celebrate it, we show big pictures of it, and then for a long time, we've just ignored it with funding and cut those classes, and they don't fit the checklist. Does that fit in here?
The underlying theory behind the Common Core is to prepare students for college and career. And so career-related courses are extraordinarily important. And I would say the coolest thing about this is that people are going to actually have time to engage, go deep, and include subjects, contents, questions that we haven't been able to do. Right now, it's a race. I mean, I get a textbook, I go from page 100 to 490. If I don't get to 490, I might be in trouble with my assistant principal. Under the Common Core, it's going to be more about discrete instructional units that will be project-based, that will, kids will have to be engaged in, will give people the opportunity to do all kinds of things. We just saw a great Common Core lesson. It was in order to graph the equations of parabolas. And what they, had the kids do was build catapults, launch M&amp;Ms, and then determine the arc that had been created. And through the software that they put on their iPad, they were able to graph the equations and determine, and how to manipulate those equations. The best quadratic equation exercise I've ever seen in my entire life, and it involved kids making stuff and then shooting M&amp;Ms through the air. And I asked the kids about it afterwards, the mathematical thinking that was required, I was blown away at their deep understanding of that, as opposed to what we have been doing is, here's your worksheet, I'll do a couple problems on the board, and I'll get back to you, or raise your hand if you have any questions.
And I just heard a comment that said that this was a sophisticated and educational version of Angry Birds. Councilmember Rouse?
Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Cash, I'm excited about this new approach to assessments and the materials. And you mentioned before about the achievement gap, and clearly that's a goal for all of us to shoot for. The common dialogue about public schools, there is a fear about the high achievers where the achievement gap may be closed, but the high achievers may not get to move forward. Is this assessment technique that you have just laid out, does that kind of address that issue?
Oh, completely, to a T, because right now, our highest achieving students, we can't, through this assessment process, we don't know what they know. We only know that they know what those questions are. Under the computer adaptive testing, they'll be asked more sophisticated questions, we'll really get to know what grade level they know, what content they know. We know that we're going to have to kind of go through a little frustration with some of those kids because some of them have this assessment dialed in. If they're maybe in sixth or seventh grade, they're used to going, taking the assessment, they're done in 20 minutes, they open up their favorite book, and they get to read for the next hour. This assessment, which will all be done on computers, will not allow that to occur. It will actually be learning more about each kid, especially our gifted students.
And Dr. Cash, did you maybe want to say something about the fact that we're going to get our assessment results sooner?
Yeah.
And that will also contribute to what's happening?
Isn't that nice? This past year, we got our assessment results in October. So, you know, it was, helped a lot in our planning for the school year. So these, we will get them within two weeks.
Ms. Parker?
I just want to follow up on what Councilmember House brought up in terms of, he was talking about, you know, visual and performing arts and how we value that essentially, how we show that we value that and how we make sure that those are disciplines that are taught in our schools and that are appreciated in our schools. And one of the things that I've been following and very curious about is, as part of the change to the Common Core, dramatic changes to assessment, it's also how will California look at how each school rates? And so they're going through dramatic changes and thoughts about what is, I don't even know if it's going to be called an API score in the future.
Right.
And I know that they're looking at ways of, well, first of all, I mean, the Common Core broadens beyond the standard, eventually, you know, right now, we have English math, we've broadened science, but other disciplines are coming into the Core gradually. But I know that the state is looking at, well, how do we show what our students can do in terms of things like the arts and music? And I don't know if you can talk about that at all.
Yes, particularly at the high school level, they have started attacking that, I think, more systemically. They're going to look at career technical education course completion as part of a school's kind of profile. They're going to look at participation in visual and performing arts as part of the school's profile. They're going to look at the percentage of students who are enrolled in advanced courses as part of the profile. They'll look at dropouts, look at graduation rate, they'll look at attendance. None of that is considered right now in the Academic Performance Index. Right now, it is, as you described, a very discreet kind of singular approach to measuring a school's performance. It'd be much broader. And that is a complicated conversation because as you could well imagine, some of you may be having your own opinions right now as you're hearing me say this, what people will be looking at. It's currently a pretty wide-ranging discussion. I've participated in one of them so far, but they're ongoing right now. So it's fascinating.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Cash. Next, we're moving on to talk about the collaboration efforts regarding school campus safety. And I know we have Marlon Sumter, and I also see our Chief of Police here, Chief Sanchez here, so I don't...
Well, first of all, I mean, you mentioned Chief Sanchez, I would like to express publicly on behalf of Santa Barbara Unified, our appreciation for Chief Sanchez and his department in the collaborative effort they gave towards our walkthroughs and the safety efforts of our schools. And specifically Lieutenant Mandrell and Officer Ryan, who helped coordinate and conduct those walkthroughs with our administrative teams at the different campuses. During these walkthroughs, you know, there's, all of our school sites received a visit by law enforcement, some of them being in the county, of course, we had the sheriff's office, the sheriff's department, conduct those walkthroughs. They were used to evaluate the security of our campuses and take a look at, you know, at what sort of needs there might be and make some observations about what is in place or what is not in place. Following the meetings or the walkthroughs through all the campuses once they were all done, along with Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Education, Emilio Handle, I met with Lieutenant Mandrell to discuss what some of those observations were and what they saw as some of the needs. And we talked about everything from, you know, fencing and gates to video surveillance to, you know, signage and visitor protocols and that sort of thing. And so part of that process included adjusting or making some adjustments to some of those things. So as some initial efforts for the district, we did develop some more signage for visitors coming to our campuses, to direct them to checking in, that sort of thing. We also established the use of name tags for all staff. Hopefully, everybody in here has them on, so it's not, okay, good, good, good. And so that does more or less to help, you know, identify who, you know, should be on the campus or not. And then even looking at, you know, modification of classrooms, the doors, entrances and exits so that staff don't have to actually go around outside the door to lock it if they go into a lockdown, so that it can be done from the inside. Oddly enough, the construction of campuses in the past have always had doors locked from the outside and not from the inside, so it creates a safety risk. But thanks to our facilities team and Mr. Hetjank and all of his folks, those adjustments were being made to fix that situation on our campuses. One thing that came out of the discussions was what Lieutenant Mandrell was calling kind of the industry standard of response and emergency protocols and lockdowns. And the way that was outlined as a change to what the usual practice has been was to be a run, hide, or fight sort of protocol. The historical practice has been in a lockdown, you lock the door and you shelter in place. And that has always been the practice at school districts, and it continues to be the practice here with Santa Barbara Unified. There are logistical issues to be considered when thinking about the other option of run, hide, or fight when you're talking about very young students. hide, or fight, when you're talking about very young students, you know, five, six, seven-year-olds, who are told to run, and where do they go? How do they know where to go? And many times, may end up in a different safety issue by running out into the streets and not being protected from whatever's going on, or just from the elements out in the streets. So, as of now, anyway, the school district is maintaining the protocol of shelter in place in the event of a lockdown, and those procedures, those protocols are practiced on a regular basis, so that students become very aware of, of what they are to do, and staff are very aware of what they are to do in the event of, of some kind of emergency, whether it be a lockdown or a fire, where you do have to evacuate, or just a general evacuation sort of thing. So, that was a great opportunity, the walkthroughs and that, the whole procedure and process was a great opportunity to have some dialogue with law enforcement, to get some outside input from those who are professionals in the field of safety and, and protection, to see what we might need to do or can do to help keep our campuses safe.
Thank you, Mr. Sumter. Board or council, any questions or comments? Councilmember Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was wondering, I was curious on the models today versus the models when I was in school. Does the concept of closing campuses, in other words, where people can't walk on and off-campus freely, is that part of the dialogue, or is that, because that's, we have open campuses, at least in the high schools. And I know there's probably reasons why we do that, but it seems like that would be more confusing in terms of security and knowing who's supposed to be and who's not on campus.
Right. The open campus concept, more or less, really would only apply during lunch hours, that sort of thing, and, and I believe that the main consideration there is the ability to provide lunch or feed all of the campus, all the students on campus at that one time. So, some, some campuses or some districts, at least in my experience, have gone to split lunches, so they, they do close the campus, but there's always, there's other logistical issues related to that as well. But it is, and has been, and probably will be, some part of the discussions about how we make sure that students remain at school when they're supposed to be there and how to keep them safe.
Ms. Parker?
Following up on Councilmember Rouse, I mean, the, the reality is that California school architecture, with the weather here, I mean, beyond whether we're supposed to allow students to stay on campus or, or leave campus, they're just constructed in such a way that, you know, the doors are all open to the outside. Most of our schools are not 100% fenced off, a number of them are, but a lot of them aren't. And it would be not only a huge resource, but just, they weren't designed to have fencing completely around them. It would just be really difficult to make changes like that, but it is something that the district is doing the best that they can in terms of, you know, narrowing access down for people from the outside to come onto the campus during the school day or at any time.
Right. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
And this may also go to the chief, but I guess my question is, if funding wasn't an issue, what don't you have that you wish you did in terms of school safety?
Well, some of the feedback I've gotten is videos, video surveillance equipment, of course, which would be strategically located mostly for, you know, parking lots, hallways, entrances and exits, and then areas, of course, where they would not be allowed, such as restrooms, that sort of a thing. But that seems to be one of the key pieces that keeps coming up, to help in that monitoring process of, of the campus throughout the day, and, and at night. I mean, because, you know, you have intruders, so to speak, come on and, and vandals that create damage to the school campuses that are helping that as well.
And we're going to pilot that concept at Santa Barbara High School.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sumter, and I think we have you on for the next item as well, which is our joint effort with the County of Sarona, Barbara regarding the truancy program.
Right, and you, as you're probably, I'm sure you're aware of, you know, there was a grand jury report asking questions about where is the truancy program in our, our county? And it was dissolved before my time with the district, just shortly before I arrived. And as a result, or as a response to the grand jury's report, the county officials approved the resurrection of that program, or a very similar version of it, with some adjustments made because of budgets and, you know, physical and, and human resources to get that started up again. But the process that's in place now is basically a six-step process that involves a sequence of meetings with parents and students at the school. Those meetings would involve school staff, such as teachers, administrators, counselors, other support staff like nurses, the youth service specialists, or any other kind of service provider that we have in our schools, to help address whatever the issue is that is keeping the student from attending school. Through that process, we hope to get a positive response from the student, and, and the parent in many cases, to ensure the student is attending school if it is physically possible. Sometimes we have students who just can't physically attend, and there's other arrangements made for that. But for those students who are habitually truant, which means, you know, three absences without valid excuse, or those who are chronically absent, which is, you know, absence of 10% of the school days up to whatever, year-to-date, those students are the ones that, that the focus is, is in on with this whole truancy process. To date, there have been approximately 50 cases heard before the SARB panel, which is basically the, the second to the last step before referral to the judicial system. And the, SARB, if you're not aware, stands for School Attendance Review Board. And what that entails is a requirement for the parent and student to appear before a panel, a board, similar to what we have here, and maybe similar in number even, of a variety of people, including school officials, community agencies, law enforcement, and that sort of thing, to discuss the needs of the students and parents or families related to their lack of attendance. Out of those cases, there's been mixed results, but mostly positive results in terms of getting a, a response that we hope for from the students and, and parents. Out of those SARB hearings, there's options that the, the chair and the panel can decide or determine, direct the family to do. Most commonly is the results in a monitoring of the student after that hearing with some directive to receive counseling or go seek out services, and maybe even right there, make a connection with a member of the panel who provides the services that are necessary for that family. And so, there's been some immediate connections made, as well as directives given to attend school. And it may be, it may not just be the student getting the directive to attend, it may be the parent getting the directive to make sure your child gets there. So, it's kind of a joint effort or attention given to the entire family, not just necessarily the individual student. Those varying results, though, from those, like I said, mostly ends up in that monitoring result, and, you know, the, the school then watches how the attendance hopefully improves, and if not, they can then be referred back to a follow-up hearing with the counselor or with the SARB panel. A few cases have been referred to probation, and then there becomes some monitoring from that end of things, and then more severe cases go directly to the court system, but we haven't seen any of that at this point. So, I would, I would say that at least up to date, we've seen some, some good successes, and I would call the program as a whole a pretty, pretty good success.
Thank you, Mr. Sumter. Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Yes, if you could tell me, what kind of numbers are, are we talking about in this program?
Well, right now, as of, well, last week, when the last SARB was held, we've had 50 SARB cases, but in terms of actual truancies, I, I really wouldn't be able to give you a, a rough number even at this point without looking at our databases, but we've find, we're finding that our truancy rate that's being reported is declining, is lower truancy rate than we've had, we've seen in the past, but of course, we always, there's always room for improvement.
Well, what, I'm totally innocent in this area. What would be a typical truancy rate for a school district?
Well, it ranges, depending on your grade level even, I mean, from elementary up through high school, you can have a range from, of anywhere from 2% truancy up to 40% truancy. So, part of it could be, you know, the open campus concept, giving kids that go out for lunch the opportunity not to come back, sort of a thing, which, you know, it's hard, hard to deal with that. But the, the schools are being very aggressive in watching and addressing those students who are indicating multiple absences. Typically, you want to catch them at the, at the three absence rate when they become the habitual truant. Then we start the process of those different meetings and referrals.
So, the truancy increases with age, then?
Basically, yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Edelson?
Yes, I know that the definition of an excused absence versus an unexcused absence has changed over the years. Didn't it used to be if a parent called in with a illness, or, I mean, can you explain if someone's on vacation?
Right.
And they let the school know in advance versus the parent not even calling at all? What's generally allowed?
Well, from a perspective of school, of a school district, if a student is not in their seat, you know, we consider an unexcused absence unless we get the phone call, and, but all that does is, is it benefits the student in terms of being able to make up work they missed, okay, if it's, if it's excused by the parent, sort of thing. But we don't get the ADA. If they're not in their seat, we don't get, we don't collect the funds for that student missing school. So, the excuse provided by the parents is, is really an, an option to be able to allow students to make up work they missed and maintain their, their grades and stay caught up in school. But in reference, or in terms of that, you know, illness, court appearances, job interviews, those kind of things can be considered, or quarantine situations are considered excused absences to be able to make up work. But if they're not in their seat, we don't get the credit for ADA.
So, when you say a student is truant, then if that's, the parent hasn't called, or, and there's, I mean, when I think of a truant student, they're not coming to class and nobody knows where they are, basically?
That's basically, the, the language in ED Code says absent without valid excuse.
Okay, so if, say, a family went on vacation, let the school know, then those would not be counted as truancies?
They would not be truancies.
Okay.
Yeah, and sometimes you can arrange for independent study for the student to take with them on their vacation, and you reach some sort of a contract with them to complete that work when they come back, or to turn it in when they come back.
Okay, thanks.
Just to clarify that, because when I look at the list of valid excuses, it's medical, dental, bereavement, and I can't remember if there's anything besides those. And, but it sounds like that for truancy in particular, I mean, I can't call in and say, my child's not going to be there for five days because I'm going on vacation. I know that that's not considered a valid excuse with the California Department of Education, but I just don't know, is that a valid excuse in terms of truancy versus non-truancy?
Well, there's a code in our system that, that, you know, it basically says other, and those kinds of things fall into that category. And when I mentioned the independent study contract, that's, if, if they don't arrange that, and if we don't know what's happening with the student, then it could be considered a truancy. If they come back after the fact and they say, well, we went on vacation for two weeks or for a week or whatever, but didn't notify ahead of time, it could be considered a truancy. It's advance notice.
Mr. Herron?
Again, I'm just going to point out, it doesn't matter what the excuse, if they're not in school, we don't get paid.
That's right.
Right. So, all these legal excuses are great, but if you take your kids away on a vacation for five days, we lose five days of pay for that student.
Right, and the student loses the benefit of the interaction with the teacher and classmates for school.
Thanks, Dave.
Councilmember Murillo?
Thank you. I wanted to report that the, there's a couple of people in the DA's office working on the truancy program, and I've seen them attending meetings of the gang task force, specifically the service, the youth service providers. And there's a group called the Teen Coalition that meets every other month. They have a luncheon. So, I'm really happy that those two people, attorneys, are looking at ways to connect truant students to services that may help them. And some of us are concerned that if it's too much of a law enforcement, criminal justice kind of response, that you're not really trying to help the student, so some of us think that. So, I'm really happy to see that, that it's a, it's a solution-oriented effort.
Law enforcement intervention or referral to probation or the courts is the last resort, and that's why it's a six or seven-step process before it gets to that, and hopefully, we get those responses in, in advance, in early steps.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Sumter.
You're welcome.
Council and board, this brings us, brings us towards the end of our agenda, where we get to talk about what we would like to discuss next year. Are there any things we'd like to place on the agenda for a future meeting? Dr. Paz?
I'd actually like to revisit our original reason for meeting, which is talk about collaborative programming, the sharing of facilities. I think that would be really great, especially around youth.
Okay, anything in particular, specific program that you're thinking of, or?
Well, you know, it, when I was running for school board, one of the things that came up quite a bit was, how do we prioritize use of facilities, fields in particular for the school district, but also fields are used by different youth groups and city facilities as well, so I think that might be of common, and it would probably be an interesting discussion.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Councilmember Murillo?
Thank you. You know, when you said that, Dr. Paz, you reminded me that I feel like our Santa Barbara Youth Council is sort of underutilized, and I've been thinking to myself, how can we engage them more? Specifically, I was wanting them to get a little more involved with dealing with high-risk and at-risk youth, but they're such sharp kids, if we gave them the challenge of what you're saying, facility sharing, recreation programs, you know, we might, if we get it from the young people. I'm in my 50s, I need to hear from the young people, they're so much brighter. And then, the one thing I wanted to, to bring up, and I know there's been some newspaper articles, and I've done a little bit of research on the fact that El Puente is closing, and if we could have a report next time about what happens when a student is, I think it's, when a student is expelled, right, then they have to go to a different kind of school. And I congratulate you for hiring Fran Wagonick for La Cuesta, which is kind of, you know, not the same thing as, as El Puente, let me throw that in there at, at this point. But there was some talk in the newspaper articles about students being integrated onto the campuses, or, or your school district, or maybe I didn't get this quite right, your school district creating alternative learning or an alternative campus, and that sounds like a really big deal to replicate what El Puente was doing, but I'd like to know more about it, please.
And perhaps Dr. Cash could say a sentence or two to clarify, and then we will bring it to the, to a formal agenda item in the future.
Yeah, those are our kids, and we will provide whatever they need to be successful, whether it's integration on our comprehensive campuses, matriculation at our continuation high school, our, our alternative high school, or a new program for youth that need something different than what we're currently having. We're committed to doing whatever it takes.
Thank you. Councilmember White?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to take off a little bit from Dr. Paz's comments at the, my, my concerns are sort of symptomatic, they're just, they're, me as a consumer and as an observer of, of a few specific instances, but I think they would translate into more of a general program. One is, I'm a, I'm a near neighbor to the Cleveland School, and it's the largest open space in our neighborhood, and it's, just use of it is, I would say discouraged on weekends and some sort of, and I can under, I understand that we're sort of in this retreat mode, a little bit of trying to protect our, our precious resources, which are under so much pressure, and yet, they're also our scarce resources, and they're in need. So, I would like to see a discussion of, of the various open spaces, as Dr. Paz was talking about, and how there might be opportunities to set up systems going forward that would, that somehow would allow them to get more, more community use. The, the high school tennis courts is another instance where there's an opportunity there, and we see that opportunity being fulfilled, for example, at the City College, where there's, the courts are school courts, but they're, the, the community gets more use of them. So, there's a couple of instances that, again, I know that if, if probably the staff in particular has a, has a sense of, oh, there's a hot button over here, there's a hot button over there, but to sort of have a look at that pool of resources and perhaps opportunities, resources, problems, and then, of course, opportunities that go with them. So, that whole area, I think, is a, is one where I'd appreciate hearing a little more about. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember White. Madam Mayor?
Thank you. Something I know, Board Member Parker and I have talked about for many years is library services, and the city's about to undergo a capital campaign at its central library for a children's library section, upgrading that, and I'm, it'd be, whenever we have that, we'll probably be in the midst of what that looks like, and for me personally, it'd be great to talk about how do we best integrate both city library services and what happens on the school district with all your libraries, and if there's opportunities for shared use somehow.
Thank you. Any other future agenda items? Any other future agenda items? We have a full agenda for the next time. All right. Well, with that, I will, um, again, thank all the council members and our board and all the staff, um, involved, and I look forward to continuing to collaborate together, work together, um, and I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
You all right?